Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, October 27th. This is a regular meeting in town council. It is 7:03 PM. Will everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call. Those present in chambers are Persko, Kohut, Lapellus, Formicella, Wales, Duvva. Mr. First Selectman, can you please tell me what members are here virtually?
Okay, I will, sir. As, okay. I have a unknown number. I have two unknown numbers and Kevin Reed.
Can you allow the two unknown numbers to speak?
The phone number 1-2-0-3-5-2-1-4-3-8-9 has been permitted.
That's Jason Mauer.
All right, Jason's here virtually.
And the number 1-2-0-3, that's you, Jason, 1-4-0-7, or no?
1-4-0-7, Sean O'Rourke.
Okay, so I have that one as well. Okay. It's just not saying, it's not saying the name, but everybody is allowed to speak.
Thank you. So all members of town council are present. Following members are present in chambers, Persko, Kohut, Lapellus, Formicella, Wales, and Duvva. Following town council members are present remotely, Reed, Mauer, and O'Rourke. I ask that the consent calendar be accepted as presented. Any objection?
Second.
Hearing no objection, I'm passing consent calendar as presented. We enter communication items. There is one change to communication item. Communication item E indicates that there is a memo from the planning zoning administrator to the town council that should be chaired. So the spelling of chair, C-H-A-I-R, that's the one change dated October 3rd, and it should be changed to October 16th, given the information provided at our town council, meaning on the dais. So with that, with those two changes, I ask that the communications be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting, and those are A through E. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on from public participation to appointments. We have no appointments this evening. Moving on to our action items. Action item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair, any update?
No update.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, Town Council Committee on Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember Duvva, any update?
No update.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet tonight. We discussed three items of business, 108, 109, 110. First one was the Connecticut DOT Act of Transportation Micro Grant. Second was the HydroCAD Software Solutions. This is a terms of agreement and for sale and licensing. And finally, we heard from the town attorney on the cul-de-sac for 64 Cambridge, and I'm sure we'll get into detail on that. All passed consensus to come to council tonight.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item E, D, Strategic Planning Committee. There is no update for this town council meeting. Moving on to item E, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee. Councilmember O'Rourke, any update?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. And item F, our first selectman's update. First Selectman Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Operations Monroe Today. My office in the Economic Development Commission in partnership with On the Mark Marketing has developed a 33-page flip book showcasing Monroe's amenities, heritage, and community spirit. The flip book is designed to inspire businesses, companies, and corporations to consider the town of Monroe as a destination of choice when deciding where to establish or relocate operations. This online publication is an outstanding introductory tool for realtors, investors, and site selectors to demonstrate Monroe's exceptional offerings for business and their workforce. This flip book will also inform new homeowners about events and activities, local services, and convenience offered in Monroe. Monroe is a community that builds the opportunities of the future. As you enjoy the information, remember to embrace Monroe's rich culture and community, our lifelong residents, and the many citizens and volunteers who brought us to Monroe today. Anybody who's interested to look at it, absolutely very, very nicely done publications at www.monroect.gov and under Monroe Today. SWACO, SWACO Focal Point Ceremony. The Senior Center was awarded as a focal point by the Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging. Senior Center Director Kim Cassie and I attended a breakfast honoring this accomplishment. This was recognized due to Senior Center's visible care and commitment by Kim Cassie and her Senior Center staff. The Senior Center continues to be a great source of activities and information for our young at heart citizens. Capital Projects, Husetonic Rail Trail. Work has begun on this state-funded project. Trees are being cleared to create a trail on the Great Hollow Lakeside of Wolf Park. These improvements will make the trail safer for people walking, running, and riding their bikes while adding to the nature experience. Community update, Center for Family Justice Violence Awareness Month Vigil. Domestic Violence Awareness Month Vigil. I attended a vigil with the Center for Family Justice in honor of domestic violence accompanied by State Representative Tony Scott as well. We both in appreciation for what CFJ does for the Monroe community when called upon. There were 87 incidents in Monroe last year, and that's 87 too many. We will embrace unwavering support for CFJ in our efforts, and we'll continue to stand with leaders who step up to combat domestic violence. Ribbon Cutting, Premier Cabinet Creations is now in Monroe. Thank you for investing in Monroe residents and their remodeling needs. That is at Gaslight Square. And also our CT 250 proclamation. There was a great turnout for the event in honor of the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. Nicole Signolian and her staff in the CT 250 Committee have been working diligently to represent this historic recognition admirably. Monroe has contributed proudly to the history of the nation and the state of Connecticut since its founding in 1823, more than 202 years ago. We declared that Monroe will be engaging in activities leading up to and throughout July 4th, 2026. Thank you to State Representative Tony Scott, Senator Jason Perle, Councilwoman Donaldin Wales, and our town clerk, Fida Stone, and Councilwoman Jason Mauer for being in attendance. Early voting. Early voting started October 20th, and we'll go on to November 2nd. The location for early voting is the community center site at 709 Monroe Turnpike. And in addition, the Eagle Scout Award. Congratulations to Christopher Butler for attaining Eagle Scout, which many aspire but few attain. His project was to build cubbies for the Wolf Park Pool. Our Park and Recreation Director, Missi Orros, was able to attend. Also, who read the proclamation was State Representative Tony Scott. Thank you to him as well. Thank you to contributing to our parks and the Eagle Scouts for doing their projects there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's it for action items this evening. Moving on to unfinished business. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. Moving on to item A, Resolution 25-108. Madam Vice Chair?
Resolution 25-108. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the MetroCOG Connecticut DOT Active Transportation Micro Grant Program Agreement for the Department of Public Works and any associated documents by and between MetroCOG and the Connecticut DOT Active Transportation Micro Grant Program.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt Resolution 25-108. Is there a second?
Second.
Given by Donaldin. Mr. First Selectman, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Connecticut Department of Transportation DOT in conjunction with MetroCOG have announced an active transportation micro grant. This grant will provide funding up to $3,982 for the purchase of 25 safety vests, 25 cones, four handheld sign paddles, 16 bicycles, and 25 bicycle helmets. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided the attached letter of opinion.
I want to call you, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-108, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Moving on to B, Resolution 25-109. Madam Vice Chair?
Resolve that James DeMayo, Town of Monroe Engineer, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the HydroCAD Software Solutions LLC Terms of Sale and Licensing Agreement and any associated documents by and between HydroCAD for Stormwater Software Solutions.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt Resolution 25-109. Is there a second?
Second.
Given by Councilmember Kohut. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This software is necessary for the design work at the Senior Center regarding the stormwater improvement project. Beyond that project, the software will be utilized for other stormwater design work on town projects. The agreement does not have a signature page, as terms and conditions are accepted when payment is processed. The town attorney has received this agreement and has provided his letter of opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Councilmember O'Rourke, go ahead.
With regards to, I guess I'm just trying to determine if this is a yearly renewal or is there a renewal process involved in it, or is this a one-off?
Thank you. Mr. First Selectman?
Probably, the town attorney would probably be better to answer that. Frank?
That's a good question. I don't know the cost associated. I know it was a license agreement that was required for the, they moved over simply from my perspective. They moved from an enterprise licensing system, a singular licensing system, to an enterprise licensing system. And the cost of it, I know, is recurring on an annual basis for the maintenance of it. I don't know the answer as to if there's a more significant cost for the first year because of the new license. I presume not. I think it's just an ongoing software agreement, maintenance type of situation, but I don't know the answer to that. Sorry.
Other discussion? Other discussion for this item?
Chairman, might it?
Councilmember Kohut.
Thank you. Might it not be prudent that we understand the terms of the agreement before we approve the agreement?
You're just talking about financing, correct?
Part of it, yes.
Well, I, with respect to my name, Mr. Chairman, I certainly have reviewed the agreement. I understand the terms of the agreement from a legal perspective, and my review was simply to confirm that the obligations of the town were appropriately reviewed. So that was the scope of my agreement. I didn't perform that. There's nothing in here that talks about finance, cost, or something. I'm not sure I got the answer.
I guess my question remains then, wouldn't it be prudent for us to understand the cost if it's changed, if it's increased, what it hasn't increased to, before we actually vote on the approval of this or nonapproval of this licensing agreement?
I guess my follow-up question with that is, hearing Lido, so you're understanding this is a multi-year contract or just a one-year?
No, it's a one-year approval that was attached to the electronic acceptance of the conditions of sale, which was a mandatory requirement for Mr. DeMayo to use the HydroCAD system that he's been using forever and ever and ever. They just changed the licensing. So from my perspective, this was a licensing renewal that he was purchasing that had additional terms attached to it. Whether or not there's a recurring cost for the software maintenance of this system, I do not know, but this was not an agreement that I would have to review on an annual basis. This is an agreement that we had to review to conform to the cloud-based licensing software, which is obviously more appropriate.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want to take a recess? We can maybe contact Mr. DeMayo and get the information.
Yeah, why don't we just take five minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I might be able to prevent that.
All right, go ahead. Councilmember Mauer is recognized.
So the terms of use for the service are an annual renewal, which they always were. This is not, this isn't a new purchase for us. This is a, they changed the license so that instead of it being a per-user basis, that you need a new license for each and every person that wants to use it, it's now just a single license that can only be used simultaneously by one person. So basically, what it allows for is multiple people can now use the same license, they just can't use it simultaneously. It's still the same exact license on the same exact renewal terms for the section 2.2, and that it's an, we have an annual license, is what we have, that we pay per year. So it's still that same exact annual license, it's just the type, how it is utilized has changed, and that's what we're agreeing to.
Makes sense, ma'am.
But I don't know the cost. Get answer to that question.
Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-109, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Moving on to Resolution 25-110. I will note to the record that this evening, we did receive additional materials at council, which included a resolution, a typed resolution, which is two pages. The top of the resolution is Resolution Number 25 dash, and then there's a blank number. For purposes of the record, this resolution will be entitled Resolution Number 25-110. And I'm going to make a motion to waive the reading of Resolution 25-110. Is there a second?
Second.
Given by Councilmember Duvva. Again, this is just to waive the reading of it, and we will discuss the merits of said resolution after this motion. Any other discussion on waiving the reading? Hearing none. All those in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. I'm going to move to adopt Resolution 25-110. Is there a second?
Second.
Given by Donaldin Wales. Discussion, I'll first throw it to the first selectman, and then I believe the town attorney also wanted to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Per Town of Monroe Subdivision Regulations 111-202G and pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-24, the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 16th, 2025, voted to certify that the subdivision located at 64 Cambridge Drive, associated with application sub-215-02, file number 1257C, has received final approval and provides a positive recommendation for acceptance. The commission finds that all conditions of the approval have been satisfied, and that all required subdivision improvements have been completed, as shown on Improvement Location Survey of Cambridge Drive Cul-de-sac, Monroe, Connecticut, prepared for the Town of Monroe Scale 1 Inch to 40 Feet, dated 11/20/2024. Map prepared by Accurate Land Surveying, which is to be filed in the Monroe Land Records, the area of the acceptance is comprised of 6,141.9 square feet, 0.141 acres. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now on to the town attorney.
All right, Frank?
Chair. We just want to address everybody. So what we're doing here is twofold. First, we're accepting a small sliver of property that compromises, terminates what was formerly known as, was formerly known as Cambridge Drive, which is now Cambridge Drive with cul-de-sacs. This is the cul-de-sac portion of Cambridge Drive. There's a bowl on the end of the cul-de-sac is the .141 acres that is necessary to be transferred to the town, which has not already been included on the underlying formerly pass through Cambridge Drive Road. So that little .141 acres was a condition of a resubdivision approval that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it set forth on one of the maps that you have before you. And in approving that, the town engineer and both the town engineer, Department of Public Works, and the Planning and Zoning Commission confirmed and accepted that all conditions of that subdivision approval have been met. All the improvements have been completed to the satisfaction of the town. It has been paid for some time. And I'm referring to it, talking about the little cul-de-sac portion of Cambridge Drive. And so the first thing that we're doing by virtue of accepting this resolution is, and by the way, this was referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes for the 24 review. Anytime we're accepting roads, which is only within the power of the, as in within enumerated powers of the town council pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes and our charter, you have the power to accept roads. But as a condition precedent, the statutes require the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve and review and approve and bless that prior to your review and acceptance. It's kind of, it was kind of a dual purpose that the Planning and Zoning Commission served at its meeting. They accepted the subdivision, they approved all of the, all the conditions, and at the same time referred it to you to say, of course, we, it seems like you shouldn't have to do this, but of course, we approve the road as presented. So we're going to accept a little sliver, and we're going to accept the cul-de-sac. The second portion of what you're doing this evening is, in 2009, town council accepted Cambridge Drive. When this town council accepted Cambridge Drive in 2009, it was not a cul-de-sac. So the new resubdivision has made it a cul-de-sac. In our review, while the town council accepted the road, a deed transferring and conveying property that compromised the road was never transferred to the town. So the town has been maintaining Cambridge Drive since 2009 as a public road, but there's no deed that we could find in the land records that shows that the town owns the property that compromises Cambridge Drive. So what we've done is, the current developer also owns, we believe, the fee simple to the property that makes up the former Cambridge Drive. So as a condition of the resolution, we're asking that this town council accept the road now known as Cambridge Drive. And really, what you're accepting right now is just the cul-de-sac piece, which is .141 acres. You look at the map, the road goes straight, and then there's a cul-de-sac, so there's a turnaround, and the turnaround is a little crescent moon, and that's the one plus .141. So that's what you're accepting as far as the road this evening, because you've already accepted the other portion of Cambridge Drive. But because there was no deed, and because back then in 2009, there was no ASB build required, Planning and Zoning now requires ASBs. They require more than the town engineer going out and looking at records to say, okay, all the improvements have been due to our satisfaction, and they now require an ASB. So we have an ASB built for the cul-de-sac portion. All portions of Cambridge Drive are located on the property known as 64 Cambridge Drive. We have an ASB for it. After that, Cambridge Drive continues on, and we do not have an ASB for that, and we believe that this town council accepted all of that. James has run, using his CAD software, that's, I'll shoot, the HydroCAD software. He's run the numbers, and the council, he believes, did accept by linear feet enough of the roadway in the past, but we've tied the obligations of this developer to give us not only the deed for the crescent moon piece, but they have to give us the deed to our satisfaction for the rest of Cambridge Drive. And it has to be reviewed by myself and attorney, our town engineer, James DeMayo, to make sure that it meets our satisfaction. I've already looked at a deed. We've already drafted some of the language. We're waiting for is a legal opinion from the developer's attorney certifying that indeed the title was vested in the proper people that are going to convey it to us, whether now or then. And secondarily, we want to make sure that there are no encumbrances on that property, because we're not going to accept the property that's encumbered. So until I get those documents, we're not going to accept the deeds and record the deeds, but the formality of accepting the roadway is what we're going to accomplish tonight. I know it's very complicated and confusing, but I'm happy to answer any questions here.
Councilmember Persko.
Is there a reason why we're doing this part tonight and not just waiting until we have all of it?
That's a good question. So there's a couple of reasons why. The council has already accepted 99.9% of the road. We're literally talking about a little sliver. Our subdivision regulations state that the Town of Monroe shall not accept any roads beyond October 31st. I ran into this issue when I was sitting up where you were many, many years ago, and we did a lot of investigation. As the chairman, I was on town council, and we did a lot of research as to what the basis was for that. And it really was that the end of the paving season is on or about now, the temperature starts to fall, and if developers want to quickly, because of that, in the past, I guess they had quickly improved properties, improved roadways right before the paving mills closed. Temperatures would drop, and it would cause heaving in the road, other conditions in the road, that when the town would start plowing the roadway, and all the new, this was a residential subdivision, all the new homeowners had the town plows going out and ripping up their roads as a result of this fast turnover. The town said, if you can't get it done in the summer, and it doesn't settle enough, we're not going to accept any roads. So it was an incentive to the developers to try to get that done. This road has been improved for years. We're not worried about that issue. And in fact, as I explained in LA, one of the things that we suggest typically when you accept a road, there's a road maintenance bond that outlives the acceptance for one year to ensure that none of those issues are going to fall on the town, and the developer has to warranty the road for a year. The road maintenance bonds have all been released on this, and it was not really contemplated, this cul-de-sac. So that's the reason why we're trying to get it done tonight, just to accomplish that. Secondarily, this little sliver here is the, is a condition of the subdivision approval. And this is the last outstanding condition of the subdivision approval. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to wrap up this file and have it complete, and the last condition would be the town approving this portion of the road. Lastly, and most importantly, in my opinion, in order for the town to maintain roads, we should, all of the roads, they should be accepted, and we're doing that. So from a liability standpoint, it's important that we not only maintain the roads so that they are insured by us, people passing over them, including our employees are insured, but we want to make sure that it's all doing properly. So that's why we're trying to get this done now. We did contemplate kicking it a little bit, but I thought it was my best interest to do it now.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kohut.
Thank you. So if I heard you correctly in your initial presentation, we don't know that there's clear title. We don't know if there are encumbrances. And if I heard you correctly, we're not even sure that the purported owner is indeed the owner on the land records. Did I hear that correctly?
No, you heard that correctly.
I heard it incorrectly. Can you then tell me again that we do not have a deed? There is a question about encumbrances. Now you said that.
Yes.
You admit you said that we don't know about encumbrances.
Well, I'm talking about two different, with all due respect, I'm talking about two different portions of Cambridge Drive.
It doesn't matter. We don't have a deed to either. Is that correct?
So let me finish it, if you don't.
I do. We have a deed to?
We wouldn't have a deed until you accept the road. So that's a condition precedent to accepting the road.
Okay.
So you have to accept the road as a condition precedent. So typically, you would accept the road, and we would get a deed afterwards.
Wouldn't we want to do a title search first and assure that?
We have assurance on the piece that you're accepting.
We do.
.141 acres is part of a subdivision approval.
I heard that.
Okay. So we know that owner of that piece, the entirety of the roadway that is positioned and exists upon the property known as 64 Cambridge Drive, we know who owns it, we know who's conveying it, and we can take care of all that. Okay? And it's literally 99% of that little piece has already been accepted by this council, and already technically was probably intended to be conveyed in 2009. We're talking about a little crescent moon piece on your map there. You can see it.
I understand.
So I have assurances that that is okay. What we want to do, what I'm accomplishing, what I'm accomplishing is, we need to make sure that developers follow through with what they should be doing. And what they should be doing is conveying the fee to the underlying roadway to the town.
I get that.
So what we're trying, what we're accomplishing with this resolution is, you're going to vote on accepting the sliver to make up the cul-de-sac, because this body's already accepted the remainder of the road.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lido, but I'm, forgive me if I misheard you, but I am, my recollection of what you said is that there is not clear title, that you're not sure that the, you're not sure there are not encumbrances, and that concerns me.
That's not what I said. And again, I'll repeat myself. So the sliver to the property and all of the roadways that's located on 64 Cambridge Drive is not an issue. The remainder of the roadway that there was no deed for from 2009, I am not sure. And I have asked them to provide opinions of that. But you've already accepted that road, so I'm not asking this body to accept any other portion of Cambridge Drive except for 1.141 acres, which is a crescent moon. That's all we're asking this council to do this evening, is to accept that little crescent moon sliver. But in addition... But in addition, so that there is some key to this acceptance, we're conditioning that acceptance on the provision of deeds having seen clear title without encumbrances to the town for the little sliver, which is not an issue, and the entirety of Cambridge Drive, so that we can clean out this issue. I could have come to council, or we could have come to council. And in other words, Planning and Zoning Commission has done nothing with respect to the remainder of Cambridge Drive. They didn't have to. All they had to do was approve the subdivision and a little crescent moon slip. That's all they were doing. That's the only piece of question. From my perspective, from a legal perspective, and I think you expected in two thousand nine, I think the expectation of the council in two thousand nine was that the town did get a deed to the road they approved. Unfortunately, that did not happen. And what I'm trying to do is clean this up, and I think this is the way to do it, so that there is some accountability here and that there is some obligation to do what should have been done in two thousand nine in conjunction with the slivers that we can record in the landmark to appropriate the entirety of Cambridge Drive as it exists right now. So I will verify, we will verify and not accept a deed without the assurances that I've set forth to you on the other portion of Cambridge Drive. But I'm not going to do that in a vacuum. I'd like to do it in its entirety. We know about the sliver, to be clear. We don't know about the rest of the road. Two thousand nine would might have fallen, but I don't know.
So Frank, if, if there is an issue with, with title, won't this go to part B of, we need your approval to move forward?
Correct. Nothing's going to happen. We're not, in fact, it's the policy of the town. No deeds are recorded. You don't see them very often because they all have to do with roadways, but any deeds that are required are attached to a Planning and Zoning Commission approval come through one of the town attorneys. So on a regular basis, I review deeds. On a regular basis, we don't accept these easements, things like that, until we're sure that there's clear title and we're sure there's encumbrances. So this is not something that's out of the ordinary. We're just trying to.
But in our own resolution, it's, it states B, receipt and approval by the town attorney and town engineer.
Correct.
All right, um, Councilmember Kohut, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Wales.
One question. So we're, basically, we're retrieving deeds that we should have had in the past for this Ca, for this Cambridge Drive, right?
For all of it except for the crescent moon.
Exactly. Right. My one question is, I know there's a larger enterprise drive that's off of that. Is enterprise drive, and do we have those? Is that the same situation, or are we okay with that?
I can tell you that Mr. DeMayo is doing a very good job of going through a lot of little subdivisions to make sure that the land records are accurate. Um, I can tell you that Cambridge Drive, I don't specifically know about enterprise drive, but I know that we are, as part of this process, going through all of those roads in that subdivision. And there are a couple other subdivisions as well that we've identified certain portions. What, what happens with roadways is, um, uh, they are cul-de-sacs, or they're terminated uh, pursuant to certain approvals, as you know, from your days on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then phase two, or whatever the next phase is, is continued, and there's a re-subdivision of, of, of that property. And there's certain small slivers of roadways that just kind of fall through the cracks.
Right.
So what we're trying to do is identify those now as we go, um, and take it up. And this one, I'm happy that, uh, I'm happy that Cambridge Drive turned into a cul-de-sac, because we're able to identify an issue.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, so that's still under investigation. Okay.
Yeah, so I'm happy to report back if, as, as we go.
Yeah, I was just looking at this as a project, this whole, that whole corporate project over there.
Agreed.
So that it's all, all buttoned up.
Add as, as well.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none? Thank you.